What are you doing on landscaping?
Let George tell you about it.
Go ahead.
I'm pleased with it, sorry.
George, can you give your perspective on this?
Okay, this company was working with us many years, like five, six, seven years ago.
Are you talking about GRC?
Yeah.
GRC?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, okay. They were here before you said.
Yeah.
Okay, go.
But then they named the guy who's handling this place, he names Carlos. They take out this company up when the other manager, they give that lot of damage to the village, he put his own company. That we take it out. This guy.
I'm sorry, what manager? When was it? What manager?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know.
Alright.
You know now. He brings some company, he do bad things to us, a lot of things that are bronze. This guy, he proposed a couple times for coming back again, you know, he hired a different company. I think so this guy, I don't know how much he offered, I don't see the prices, like two thousand fifty hun- two hundred fifty, two thousand five hundred dollars for two. Okay? Two, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, two for a year. It's about sixty-three. Can you let me see?
I'm saying it was fifty-three thousand, fifty-three thousand a year, did you say?
Yeah, that was a month.
Yeah, it was week. Fifty-three thousand a year, correct?
Fifty-three thousand a year, we pay four thousand, four twenty-five a month for twelve months.
Okay, George, is that what you're looking at, looking for?
Sixty.
Sixty-two thousand, four hundred and forty.
Sixty-two thousand.
Oh, it went up?
That's yearly for.
For GRC. For the year, over OC, okay. Alright.
Twenty, twenty-eight.
I'm confused, I'm sorry, are you talking about GRC or OC?
I want to know what you think about GRC, not, forget about OC for now.
I know he's good company.
Which company are you, I don't know which company you're talking about.
No, no, we're not talking about that, George. He's asking you, was GRC, the former company, any good? That's what he's asking.
Was GRC good?
The one that quit.
Yeah, yeah, it was good.
It was good, okay. He wasn't good at the tree trimming, but he was good at the landscaping, correct? Alright, we had complaints about tree trimming.
Yeah.
But the landscaping, apparently George is saying they were good. Now you found this other company, OC, that was here before. OC is the one that was here before, not GRC, okay. So OC, you're telling us, is also good, but instead of fifty-three, they're, what, sixty-two?
They're sixty-two thousand, four forty.
Okay, so what?
And then, and then they won another four thousand for fertilizer.
Okay, and all, of all these, OC is the least expensive of all these?
Yes.
Okay, so what Bob was proposing is that we try to negotiate something with the, with GRC. Fifteen thousand dollars is what's in dispute. Versus going with OC, which is sixty-two thousand. Uh, that's a difference of about nine thousand, maybe if we could.
With fertilizer, uh, it's like thirteen thousand dollars.
Thirteen thousand? So it's total would be seventy?
Well, OC, I don't know, did the, GRC do fertilizing for us?
No, they never got that one.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, they've been with us for years. No, no, GRC was here for a year.
Okay, alright.
And it seems like years.
Yeah.
And yes, they did, they did one, one or two fertilizing.
Was that included in the sixty, in the fifty-three thousand? Was it included in the fifty-three thousand?
GRC's fertilizing was included.
In the fifty-three?
Yeah.
And you're saying OC's contract doesn't include it?
With the fertile, yeah, with the fertilizing, OC is sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six?
It's another thirteen, thirteen thousand a year more.
And fifteen thousand is what's in dispute?
Right.
So what you, what you were suggesting is try to negotiate down the fifteen.
Yeah.
Keep GRC, if we can get it to like ten thousand, we'd still be saving money.
Every year.
Versus.
This year, next year.
And years.
It's a hundred and thirty thousand over ten years.
Right, yeah. Because it's not just one year, we're talking about it, it's, right, year to year. Um, I think that's a very, that's a very reasonable suggestion, actually.
Well, wasn't everything in writing, that's what I don't understand, how could there be a discrepancy if you had a contract?
Well, that's, that's what I was arguing with them about. Because when I got, when I got the invoices from them, and I saw how they broke it down, I said, wait a minute, those numbers don't look right. So I went to the contract and I pulled out the price list, and I started looking at it, and I said, they're overcharging us, they're overcharging us here, 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 and here. And they're still contending that we still owe them money.
So if they were trying to, excuse my expression, rip us off, why are we even considering going back to them?
Because, because it would be cheaper than going with one of these other companies, and apparently they were doing a good job on the landscaping, not necessarily on the tree trimming, which is where the dispute.
I thought it was hard come cleanup.
The tree trimming.
Well, it's the same, come cleanup, right.
The tree trimming.
GRC did our cleanup, did our tree trimming.
Tree trimming.
And did our landscaping. Separate contracts on each aisle.
Listen. Listen. But that's a separate issue. What, what Bob is trying to point out, okay, on just the landscaping, they were doing apparently a good job. We, we didn't hire them to do tree trimming again this year, so that's a whole separate issue. What he's saying is that, uh, if we go with one of these other companies, even the least expensive, it's gonna be fifteen thousand more per, whatever, per year. Uh, where that's more or less the total amount of the dispute with GRC. So even if we say, okay, we will pay you the fifteen thousand dollars, even though we disagree, we would still be saving money over the long run versus going with even the second, uh, the, the second cheapest company.
So we need to, we need, let me make sure I get this correct. We owe them money for the tree trimming.
They say we owe, they say we, we owe them money, we just do that.
So we need to.
Not, not for the tree, tree trimming, for the, for the cleanup.
For the cleanup.
Right, I remember the fiasco with that. So, in question, it's fifteen thousand dollars. We owe them fifteen thousand dollars because.
That's what they, that's what they said, yes.
They charge us sixty thousand dollars. We caught the mistake.
No, it wasn't, that was a mistake, that was, it was stated in the meeting, and we looked back and it wasn't sixty.
But they were already.
It was like thirty.
They were already paid before the work was done. They were already paid, John, the money before the cleanup.
Not sixty, that was, that was a misstatement.
Right, I'm saying though, they were already paid for the cleanup for Irma, when they did not.
That I don't know, I don't know how many checks went out there and over what, uh, amount of time.
I was sitting right here when we had the conversation.
Okay, I don't think it's. You go the cheapest company for. Okay, I don't wanna say it takes too much money, also I have to see the quality job. His company was in the past, you know, was quality cleaner, um, doing job. Only time he left, finished the job, cooked the house, everything, all by myself with my employees, we pick out the links.
George, are you talking about GRC?
No, we don't know. This company, the last company is working.
Is GRC?
Yes, GRC.
So you're saying you.
I cannot satisfy with GRC.
No, I was telling with him a couple times, I show you thing, I go with him, I'm running with him, we calling the guys. They don't come in the moment, they come in after two, three days for pick up the rest of the job. They never leave. I won't tell you right now, probably they think very good this side, with the style. When I go to my places, the last place they looking, I'm, I'm behind, I'm, I'm in the Orleans building. Who would complain from me? My wife. Look at this guy, what they do, she's clean by herself, all the iron, the bathroom, I mean.
Because they're pissed off because they didn't get paid.
Yes, that's the problem.
Tree cleaning, that's what it is, they're pissed off.
They don't, they don't go it, so. It's not only first time, many times.
But, but George, what I'm trying to say is, they're upset because of Irma, they gave us a price, okay, of thirty-five or forty thousand dollars, or how much ever it was. We caught the mistake at the meeting, okay, they were already paid, they were already paid before the job was done. I remember the conversation very well, and we questioned, why were they paid when there was still trees and everything all over the place? And then that's where the problem came up, where we needed to look elsewhere for somebody to do the cleanup. Cause they didn't want to finish the job because they didn't get paid all of their money.
Who is responsible for this problem?
Hello, it's sitting right in front of you.
Please, we need. I, I don't think there was another company that, that, I don't think that was correct about another company being brought in, I think.
No, no.
The same company, the same company did all of it.
We discussed this after.
But the same company, it wasn't some other company.
Right, but they were already upset because they were owed money from Irma that they did not get because we tabled it. We tabled it.
Okay, anyway, I wanna get back to this issue though, uh, and what kind of job GRC was doing. George says it wasn't great, uh, we have another proposal here, OC, uh, that is a deal more expensive. Perhaps could we try to negotiate that price down from sixty-three to, uh, see if they'll accept fifty-five?
Do we know the quality of work that they do?
They, they, they were here before, according to Jordan, they were good.
No, it's sixty-seven, with the fertilizer, it's sixty-seven.
Just how do you check everything George said? I know the company that we just had, that, that George wasn't happy with, and I wasn't happy with. I mean, they would leave a power of leave there for days, you know, I don't really think we wanted that.
Okay, so, so why don't we go with OC and try to negotiate that price down from sixty, what is it?
That's.
Is it sixty-seven?
With fertilizer.
Before the fertilizer. Oh, and we definitely need, how, how many, one fertilizer, three, what is it? And it's five thousand, no, three.
It's thirty-six, so it's.
There's two per year, is that?
Three.
What time for you?
It's three.
Three times a year you need that.
That's what we were, that's what we have done traditionally?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the total.
No, they're talking only about doing fertilizing twice a year.
Okay, so the total with everything would be what? What would it be?
Sixty-six ninety.
That's with fertilizer?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, what if we, sixty-six ninety, I mean sixty-six nine, what is it, nine hundred, you mean?
No.
Sixty-six ninety, okay. Sixty-six thousand ninety.
But with two fertilizers, not three.
Right.
Is two enough?
If they say it is.
Okay. Alright, so six, what, what I would, yeah.
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe you need three fertilizers.
Okay. So, um, why don't we, uh, come back to them and say, okay, we'd like to, uh, hire you, um, but not at sixty-six, that sixty. Including fertilizer.
Sixty?
Sixty including fertilizer? You don't think that was it?
Maybe I'm dealing with the question decided, hey.
Sixty-two with fertilizer?
That's the cheapest.
We have several. We have several in front of us, yeah.
Five thousand a month, so it's great, sixty thousand a year.
Sixty thousand a year, they, what you're saying, they wouldn't accept that?
Right now, we're.
Alright, let's try sixty thousand, um, Dan, can you, uh, help out with this negotiation and try to get, try to get them down to, um, from sixty, would you say sixty-six?
Yeah.
Down to sixty, uh, up to sixty-three, okay? Alright, um, again, that was OC, we're gonna give, uh, Dan, um, negotiation, um, authorization to go up to from sixty to sixty-three on this one, okay? Uh, that's for OC. Alright, um, Rabbit, are you good with that? Rabbit? Okay, so you wanna make that motion to, um, to propose, uh, prices between sixty and sixty-three for the annual, uh, landscaping plus fertilizer? Instead of the sixty-six?
Including fertilizer.
Right.
Yeah.
Including fertilizer, correct. Sixty to sixty-three. Okay, so Rabbit makes the motion, uh, Carl, would you like to second? Uh, so Carl made, sorry, Rabbit made the motion, again, the motion was. OC.
Can we get him tomorrow?
Oh. OC, okay. Okay, so the motion, Carl, is to, um, to accept OC, guys, please, guys, no cross-conversation, please. Uh, to accept OC's bid, but to bring it down to sixty, uh, sixty thousand to sixty-three thousand, instead of the sixty-six thousand. Rabbit made that motion, um, uh, do you second it? That's to go with, to go with OC, at sixty to sixty-three, okay. Carl seconds it? Sixty, sixty thousand to sixty-three thousand, including fertilizer. Uh, there's a motion and second, any further discussion, any objection, it's approved. Um, what's the next item, Dan?
Pest control.
Pest control, we already did, right. What's the next one?
Dance floor.
Dance floor, okay, good.
Okay, hold on.
Turn on the music.
Nobody signed the contract before Bob checked it?
We, we haven't signed it yet, we haven't negotiated the price yet, so it has to come back to us.
I don't sign any contracts, don't worry about it. Okay, dance floor, um, I had brought in, uh, proposals originally for laminated, and, uh, that was shot down because George said it wouldn't be good. Uh, so I went back to these companies and asked them then to give me proposals for hardwood floor, which was what George recommended. A laminated floor from, uh, dolphin carpet and tile would have been twenty-one hundred dollars. A hardwood floor, uh, is seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, then I went to Flooring Express and only asked him for the hardwood, and his is four thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, I also went to, damn, that one, get in there. Went to, to. That's laminated. Uh, I went. No, but there was one for hardwood that I gave you. Okay, uh, I spoke to, uh, Broward Discount Carpet, uh, and they had given me a price of three thousand, uh, three hundred and eight, three dollars for laminated, and I thought I had their hardwood floor on there, but it was about a thousand, give or take a little bit, uh, more for the hardwood floor. So those are the prices that we have. Obviously, the laminated floor, uh, it's less expensive, according to all of these companies, the laminated, I explained, uh, what George's objections or concerns were about using laminated, um, because he says they, that he brings in these special dancers every once in a while for these, uh, parties, uh, and they're it. What these companies ask me, is this something you do on a regular basis? And I said, we do it two or three times, maybe four times a year tops, and he said that he didn't think there would be a problem with the laminated floor, but, uh, George felt that there would be. So as I said, the laminated floor is about twenty-one hundred dollars, hardwood is seven thousand dollars, for, uh, this Flooring Express, Express, excuse me, is forty-one hundred dollars. And I don't, as I said, I don't know what happened to the other one.
Okay, was it more than forty-one hundred, you know?
Uh, yes, yeah, it was more than forty-one hundred.
And you said the laminated was how much, three thousand?
Twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one?
Twenty-one hundred, yes.
Versus forty-one? So it's a difference of two thousand.
Well, the twenty-one hundred is laminated.
I know, so it's a difference of two thousand dollars, is it, what we're asking then is, is it worth paying the, the two thousand extra dollars to get the better floor? That's gonna be there for.
Is that included labor?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think that, you know, if, if it also lasts longer, if it's not just, um, you know, better for Dan, for the, uh, special, specialized dancers, if it lasts longer, then it would be worth it, wouldn't it, if it lasts longer?
Yeah.
Hardwood lasts longer than laminate, isn't it? Doesn't hardwood last longer?
Well, the, the laminate is, is a manufactured product, and the hardwood is written, natural wood. The, the one thing we have to make sure is that it's, it's kept, uh, maintained, uh, and that they just don't, you know, forget about it, let it get a little scratched up and scuffed and broken, like the parquet floor that we have out there now.
I understand that that floor's got termites right now.
Could very well be. Could be, cause when, one of the.
I just got outside, stayed in my city, it's a wood. How long is this, this floor sitting there? Thirty years.
Okay, what do they do, okay, if, if there's termites in the old floor, when they, when they tear it up, do they also treat it with something to make sure?
No, we would have to bring in our exterminator to have it treated.
Okay, but, but what's, what is it, like, what's the process step by step? They tear it out, does, does the exterminator have to be there when they're doing it, or are they laying a new one, or how does that work?
Um, I, I would have our, uh, guy come out, take a look at the wood first, before we even went forward with anything, and make sure that there isn't any termites in there, before we bother to take, to tear it up.
Okay, so, um, why don't we approve the, uh, which company, which one company was there?
Excuse me, can I just say one thing? Um, I, if you would, ask them where they get their wood, because if you remember yours back with lumber liquidators, they came from China, and they had asbestos. Do you, is that you want to recall?
When was this?
A few years ago, there was an issue with lumber liquidators, selling, uh, below quality stuff from China, and that, and they did not tell their customers that.
They had a recall.
Oh, wow, okay, um, so.
I guess it would have to, the termites migrating into the building.
But, uh, Dan, can we, um, can we look into that?
Yes.
Make sure that the, you find out where the wood is coming from?
Yes.
Send us an email before, uh, you tell them to, you know, to proceed with the, uh, with the.
Okay, you want to make a motion with the contingency, that I find these things out, and that we don't.
That it not come from China.
Indonesia, no problem.
I only report the news.
North Korea?
Okay, so, alright, so go with the Flooring Express, forty-one hundred dollars, as long as it doesn't come from China. And if it does, then I guess we go with the other bid that we're missing here from, uh, from what was it, Ford Department?
No, from, um, Broward Discount Carpet.
Broward Discount Carpet, okay. So, alright, so we need a motion for, um, Flooring Express hardwood at forty-one hundred dollars, um, with that contingency. And, uh, if that's, if, if it doesn't pan out, um, then we would go with the next one, Broward, did you say Broward Discount?
Yes.
Um, which is also approximately four thousand something. So. Anyway, uh, Rabbit, did you get all that? Rabbit?
I think I got, yeah, I think I got most of it.
Okay, yeah, um, since you brought, since you were the one who brought this up a couple months ago, um, do you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, I, I think that, uh, that from China was, uh, I think that was from a company called, uh.
He was mentioning before, what was it?
One more liquidator.
Yeah. Lumber, yeah, lumber liquidators, yeah.
Well, you just wanna make sure, I mean, it's a different company, but we just wanna make sure that, where they're getting.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not.
Okay, so, um, we make the motion, okay, this is the hardwood. Right, uh, okay, um, Rabbit made the motion, uh, Carl, you want a second? The, uh, approve, approving, um, Flooring Express, forty-one hundred dollar hardwood floor.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, Carl, second, any, um, any, any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. Alright, next item. What's the next one, Dan?
Roof repairs.
Roof repairs. Alright, go ahead. Is this one, one? Just one finger? Dan, is this one finger? I see one.
Okay, well, this was, um, well, this, this was a invoice, but this really didn't have to be approved by the board because, uh, it was only four hundred and fifty dollars. I think what that roof part really was about, was what we discussed earlier about all the leaks that we're having, uh, in, specifically in, uh, the Orleans, but.
Okay, but if we don't have a proposal in front of us, this is not this, I'm open.
Right, right, there, there wasn't any proposal yet on there.
Was this, was this particular one in front of us, the, um?
That was a repair on, on, on 3T in the Marseille building, which was four hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, since it's before us and it's on the agenda, let's just go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
This was done already, was the work already?
Yeah, it's all, all done.
Okay, so, um, uh, so, if, this is a simple motion, Rabbit, you wanna just make a motion to approve the, uh, repair, it was only four hundred and fifty dollars, but since it's before us. Ra- Rabbit, can you hear me? Hello? Okay, so you wanna make the motion, okay. Rabbit made the motion, uh, Carl, you want a second? It's for the roof repair. Roof, roof repair. You wanna second, second the roof repair in Marseille? Okay. So, any objection, hearing none, it's approved. Next item? Next item, Dan?
Okay, the, I was hoping that I would have the proposal from this company to do the balcony in the Nottingham, but they have not sent me the proposal. Uh, this is the same company that's doing the, uh, repairs in the Bordeaux building. Uh, I don't know if it's going to be the same amount or anything, I contacted them three times, they told me that they would send me the proposal, it still hasn't showed up.
Oh, okay. This, this item was approved as part of the manager's, uh, report last time, but it wasn't on the agenda, so, I mean, as long as it's before us, just, even though we don't need to do this, just to, um, we can just ratify, I guess, what we did last time, since now it's on the agenda, um, so, uh, which was what? What did we, what did we approve, it was a total of like sixty thou, I'm sorry, six, it was a total of six thousand, is that right? Sixty-eight hundred, right?
Uh, no, it's more than that.
It was more?
Yes. Sixty-eight forty was for the contractor, but for the engineer, it's, uh, twenty-four plus, so it's, uh, thirty-one.
So it's seven, nine thousand something, total?
Yeah, it was about, it was like, almost ten thousand.
Oh, okay. It's two, cause it's two, one is engineer, one is constructor. No, 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 it's two, it's two different.
If you look at that first page, John, the total is nine thousand, two hundred and forty.
Oh, I see, it is on the first page, okay. So it was two, it was sixty-eight hundred for the construction, but twenty-four hundred dollars for the engineering, uh, which had to come before. So, uh, we just see, the, the engineer was ARA Engineering, and the construction company was Summer, something? Summer General, okay.
Yes.
So, um, Rabbit, you wanna just, uh, make a motion to ratify this?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, Rabbit made the motion to ratify the balcony repair, Carl, you want a second?
I guess Rabbit and I are the only one.
Yes. Carl seconds, okay, um, correct, alright, you're shaking your head, but you mean yes, right? Alright, next item, I'm sorry, no objection, hearing none, next item, fines, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Fines, um, let's see, Dan, can you go through those very quickly?
Yes, E, E two J, E one Z.
Uh, can you just tell us very briefly what it's for? E one J, whatever.
E two, E two J is screens.
I don't see screens, I see balcony stores.
Yes, but they, they cleaned up their balcony stores, the next page show is for their screens.
Oh, I see, so they had two, no?
Yes, they had two. What are you doing? What are you doing?
Fines, okay.
Okay, uh, E one Z, uh, was patio screen frame was removed without approval.